Thank you everybody for coming. I wish we had a bigger crowd, but is Mr. DePauw here? For Parks? Doug's here. Well, that's a start. We have the airport, and we have the police. That's great. Okay, do we have the cemetery? Casper? Bad joke. Okay, could you take the roll call, please?
Am I there?
Yes, I will.
Trustee Pearson.
Present.
Trustee Vance.
Here.
Trent Hurd.
Here.
Mark Reesma.
Here.
Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
All here in person.
Board members' conflict of interest statement?
None.
None?
None. I would like to interrupt for a technical matter, just for a second. We have finally figured out what makes the microphones buzz. So if you enjoy that, I'm going to tell you how to make it happen, and if you don't enjoy it, I'm going to tell you how to make it not happen. Don't put your cellphone near the microphone. And that's for us here at the table.
Or just turn off the Bluetooth?
And it's...
Airport.
And that's also true for the podium, which doesn't have a mic.
Okay. Okay.
Come on, honey.
Folks, it's going to be a really long night. I hope you can bear with us. I want to make some announcements first, and then a motion. For those citizens that may not know it, our The VFW Memorial Parade is Monday at 11:00. You line up on Burge Field, as always, at 10:30. It will stop at South Avenue to that Veterans Monument, then it'll go to the Peyton Mine, and then to the end of River Street. Did I get that right, Chief?
I believe we just started stopping at the Peyton Memorial.
Okay. Okay. Also, I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but we had an incident this past weekend?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. And one of our officers saved a man's life. I will tell you, I attended the very same training that the police did, as a lot of us did. And that training, plus his previous training and his fast thinking, saved a man's life. And I'm certain he would have died of just bleeding out. So congratulations once again to our police department. Another thing, and we'll have more on that later. I do want to remind the audience, just to explain the many times that I've explained before, this is a board meeting amongst the five of us. This is not a township hall, where everybody can just say whatever they want, whenever they want. But I will be calling on certain people during the budget process. When I call on you, please go to the microphone and turn on your microphone. Did I leave anything out?
No.
I would like to make a motion, under special meeting rules, if we have unanimous consent, we can add an agenda item to... I would like to add, below the general fund in 8A, I'd like to add 8A1 pay setting, since we're doing the general fund anyway. Is there a second at all?
I'll second that.
Is there...all in favor?
Aye.
Any declinations? Okay, so we'll add that in. So we're going to move right along, and I want to turn this over to Jay real quick. He's gotten us some break, along with our airport manager. Mark, could you stand up, introduce yourself, tell us something about yourself?
My name is Mark McElwitt, the new current airport manager in Indian River.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm sorry, Kramer moved, and Janet moved.
Seconded, supported, yep.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, that we can have a discussion, to move, to change our insurance company from Star, presently with Adam Gendolphi, to Aquasure, which is the contact is Victoria Newville, to supply our airport liability insurance. And this is assuming that we have comparable coverage, and the cost would be $1,325 a year. I'm trying to get the...I'm trying to clarify the coverage.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Okay, go ahead, Jay. Do you want him to...Mark, tell them what you did for us.
Well, I just...
Step right up there.
My current...
Push the button and hold it down.
My current provider of insurance...
Now, you can let go.
Okay.
Yeah.
My current provider, I just ran it by her to see if she was interested in looking for and quoting us on our airport liability. It's also, the primary carrier, I don't know how you refer to them, is also Star. So it's the same major company supporting...
Just a different insurance agent.
Right, just a different agent. And I just said, can you help us? And she said, well, I'll take a look. And there were a number of charges we were paying for, such as towing fees, you know, moving airplanes around, full-service fuel, none of that applies to us. So she took all that into consideration, and a couple other little items, and came up with this quote. I don't know what the difference is between the previous and the current, but if we save money, we save money.
Well, the difference is, you know, this is discussion, the difference is, I think we paid $2,030 this past year, and so this would be $1,325. The only question I still have, that I want an answer on, is just I want to make sure we have comparable liability coverage, that's all. If we do, then I'm going to ask the board to support the motion moving forward, and so...
Well, you already made that motion.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that all you need for me right now?
Yeah, right now. I'll get back to you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, any more discussion?
I call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jay, Park's truck?
I just want people to know that Doug has his Park's truck. And it's obviously...
Well, we posted it online, everybody's...
63,000 and some change, and it is insured, and we're, let's see, we're just trying to work out some of the little details with the insurance.
Okay. We got, what was that, about a $100,000 truck?
Yeah, $70 probably, for $60. It wasn't over $100.
No, it was...
I mean, what would you pay...I mean, we looked it up, and it was like, a used one was $75.
It was less than a used one.
Yeah.
It was less than a used one, that's awesome. Okay, next item, building agreement. Ron?
Yeah, I'm not really prepared to speak on this, but...
Just tell them the process.
It's, in the building committee between Gordon, myself, and Kelsey from the library, we just looked at the existing building agreement, shared use agreement, we just cleaned up a little bit of language in it, deleted some things that were no longer appropriate, and added two preferred vendors. So I don't have it in front of me, but as the document that you should have, is the final edit.
Yep.
And I believe the library already adopted it.
Their board did, yes.
It's just a matter of us adopting it.
And the police chief is in concurrence?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further...is there a motion to accept the new building agreement?
I make a motion to accept that.
I support it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Navenoy Trail Agreement. I move the Special Assessment Resolution Number 6 for Navenoy Trail, paragraph 3, be amended to correct and reduce the role from $42,374 to $38,500. That was a very cool error on the part of our council.
I'll support that.
Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion back.
Oh, I think we need a roll call vote for that, don't we?
No, no, it's just an amendment.
Just because it's an amendment.
We will on the next one.
I would like to summarize that the overall cost is still...
The same.
The same, $76,000.
Right.
We are going to cover $17,000 in $108 something, and the Road Commission's going to cover 35...or 25,000, and the role will cover the other expense of $38,500.
And because we don't have to have an SAD over a period of time, because there's no bond payment, you'll see later down the road where I literally put it in the general fund budget.
I did see that.
So that's going to save us a lot of paperwork down the road. The next item, did we vote?
No, we did not vote yet.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Did we vote on that?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I was still trying to figure out if we needed a resolution or not.
Yeah, yeah. So MEDC Indian River LLC Sewer Resolution. Ron, I mean to put you on the spot, would you...just give them the highlights.
I'm prepared for that. So this is regarding the Mike Keeter man cave development at the Commerce Park. He is using Wade Trimble, the representative, or as professional engineers, Quinn Ridley. Quinn contacted me on Monday to help fill out an MED...an EGLE form that basically just requires that the township formalize the fact that they are not responsible for the plumbing on his property. Basically, it's from the tap onto his property, and all those connect.
And this is an EGLE requirement, correct?
This is an EGLE requirement on an EGLE form. After speaking with Aaron Nordstrom at Performance Engineering, I provided them with the written document that they needed. Aaron suggested that we also pass this as a resolution. He said this is very common when dealing with municipal sewer. He provided the language. It is specific to that MGD, MDG development, and it's all it does is it says that the township does not accept liability beyond their cap.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Whereas MDG Indian River LLC has proposed to construct a privately-owned public sanitary sewer collection system to serve a private condominium association. Excuse me. The development property is located within the Commerce Park, which served by township sewer. And whereas, primary responsibility for the effective and continuing operation and maintenance of said system will be assumed by MDC Indian River LLC, and whereas, the township of Tuscarora recognizes the need for effective and continued operation and maintenance of said system to protect the public health and prevent unlawful pollution of the surface and groundwater of the state, and to prevent the development of nuisance conditions. And whereas, the township of Tuscarora deemed it impractical for the township to provide for the effective and continued operation and maintenance of said system, should MDC Indian River LLC fall in any way to perform in this capacity. Now therefore be it resolved that Tuscarora Township does hereby acknowledge that MDC Indian River LLC will pursue permitting of said sanitary system, which will result in a connection of a private sewer collection system to the township sewer. Further, the township hereby refuses to assume responsibility for effective and continued operation and maintenance of the proposed private sewage system, finding that this obligation will be better handled through the state. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution. Are we going to call this Resolution Number 6?
You call whatever number you want.
I think my last one was 6.
Okay.
Whatever the next numerical...
All right, so you made the motion, is there support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tim Pearson.
Hang on a minute. Jay made the motion.
Supported by Janet.
Okay, go ahead.
Kim?
Yes.
Janet Vance?
Yes.
Jan Dilly?
Yes.
Bob Kramer?
Yes.
And Jay Reesma?
Yes.
The resolution is declared adopted. All right, now on to the fund budget workshop, but before we do that, I just want to make one other announcement that I forgot. Citizens of Indian River, property owners of Indian River, just remember that we have a Tall Grass Ordinance, we have a Blight Ordinance, we have a police force to enforce that. We generally, I can't speak for the police, but it's been my experience, that the police try to work with the homeowners to get a cut. But I'm telling you, if you're a repeat offender, you're probably going to get a ticket the first time. Both Jay Reesma and I have the authority to issue those tickets, but it's better led by the police department, because they're doing it all the time. So I'm just asking citizens, if you need help cutting your grass, get a cut, find somebody to get a cut, and get rid of the piles. We've got some people that are starting to pile up, and we're taking care of that now.
Well, it's growing faster than what it normally does this time of year, because of the weather, so...
Okay, so we're going to get into, first, the general fund. And Chief, usually we let you go first, but because we have a lot of work to do on the general fund, we have...is Chris here?
Yep.
Oh, there she is. So Chris is over here, and what we're going to do, Chief, is we're going to do our general fund first, then, let me put this over here. While we're doing that, she'll be putting in the new numbers. So, you know, that's why you're not going first. In front of you, you see a memorandum from Mr. Kuiper. And, you know, we can talk about pay setting at the end, but he's giving you his reasons to ask for a 2.5% increase. Seems pretty well self-explanatory. I will say I'm very impressed with this man, and his assistant. Very impressed. Okay, so why don't we start with revenues? Your property taxes...oh my gosh, God bless Liz up at County Equalization.
She's great.
This is the third time around, so because of Headley, we're limited to $302,353. Now normally, just to explain to the board, 1 mil is about...316?
I think yours is 317.
317? But in that 317, we have to back out the estimated amount of taxes we won't receive because of disabled veterans exemptions. Then, we have to figure out Headley, which is a certain formula, which we have figured out, which reduces it even further. So I think we went from 317, and then we had to make the reductions of 1.5.
You're talking about $317 million, correct?
Wow.
Right.
I think that's your hearing aids, isn't it?
Yes, is it? Oh, boy.
Anything electronic here that...
I don't have a laptop, Bluetooth, but... Okay, we'll see if that works, but I can't hear anybody. Which is probably just as good. Unfortunately, that's what I do to my wife sometimes, I turn her off.
At least he's honest about it.
So, yeah, at least I'm honest about it. So in any event, that's where that figure comes from. It's still up a little bit from last year, okay? Everything else is pretty much as it was in previous years. Let me see here. We took out all the stuff from land sales, because we have no more land to sell, and we're still waiting to close on the Globe property, but that'll be before the end of the fiscal years. And as you all know, the cemetery grave site line changes. You know, I've changed that by budget amendment several times. Airport hangar leases are more up to date. We calculated those pretty well, right, Chris? And contributions from private sources, I left that low because I don't know how much money people intend to raise for fireworks next year. Other than that, I really don't have anything to change. So it's $844,613. Is there anybody that has a case to change any of these figures? Okay, so let's move right along. Timber sales on revenue, you don't have to worry about that, that's over. We netted $27,208. I'll get Mark to talk about that in a minute. Next thing I'd like to talk about is township board funding. Is there anything in there? I put in here for the administrative assistant to cover a raise that I'll make a motion for when we get done with the general fund. Yeah, maybe just turn that one pop down a bit. We also, Chris recommended an amount of money for the office staff, and then she computed the FICA, the UIA, and that other stuff. Now, I do want to point out, fireworks, 101, 101, 880. Okay, that is high. Well, that is high for two reasons. One, we...the board has traditionally given $15,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Janet?
Yes, that's the minimum amount now.
Right, so that's in there next year. But because we raised so much money, right, this is the...we're going to need another $17,000, which we have raised this year, but it's going to show up next year, because July 5th is the next fiscal year.
Right, we won't get the bill until after the next fiscal year.
Right, so now we already paid part of it. We paid $9,000 something, right?
As a deposit.
As a deposit. And we have, our total bill, just for the fireworks, is $28,000, $1,000 for the music, the DJ, and the party. And Chief, how much for the extra?
$2,000.
$2,000. Did you get enough?
We're still...we'll have it.
Will you? Yeah, well, hopefully Mackinac City and Marine Patrol.
Yeah, they're already going to be out there.
Yeah, they're out there.
We don't pay for that one.
Right.
So while we're on fireworks, is there anything you want to interject to the board that they don't know?
Well, just, we're just going to have a big show this year. The community was very, very generous. They loved what they saw last year, they want to replicate it this year. And so everybody that's talked to me says, we love the music, it was great, it made it a lot different, and a lot more party atmosphere, and that's what it's supposed to be, because we're celebrating the birth of our nation. And they love the fact that the people in the park was just in a party mood, and street dancing, and everything was going on, and they just all loved that atmosphere, and they want to replicate it. So they were very, very generous.
Yeah, the little kids were funny when...it was hilarious to watch them dance with the adults. I really want to do thank the local businesses that stepped up.
A lot of them did.
We will be putting, depending on their level of sponsorship, board members, we will be putting...
Banners.
Banners at DeVeau Beach two weeks prior to the fireworks, and one week after, as well as what we've done on social media. So I'm really looking forward to that.
And we have donation boxes still out in various different locations throughout the community, and we're picking the money up about every two weeks, and we did pretty good this last time through.
So the bottom line is, we really only needed about, because we got a...we even got a sponsorship from the fireworks company for a couple of thousand dollars. So we're not going to need the entire $40,000, but I think right now, with our contribution, we're at like 32 already, or 33. We've met our expenses, maybe 34. We've met our expenses, and I think we'll be able to pay down this some more. Another thing in Department 101, 101, you'll see a bump up in...hang on just a second. I got to get something to rule with here. I added, I doubled the budget for board education and training, for obvious reasons. If they use it, that would be up to them. Other than that, there aren't that, and the administrative assistant, there isn't much change. Is there anything that a board member would like to discuss or point out?
I know we're working with Anvenon, and we had some other IT issues. Not close enough. Trying not to create another hot mic. Is there, is the $13,000 a estimate, or do we have an actual plan for the $13,000?
It was accurate at the time, it's almost two years old, so...
But can I get another year out of that server?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but '26 is the end of what?
Ooh.
'25 is, needs to be in the '25 budget, for sure.
Well, I know we had to buy some computers back here, because end of life...
November for Windows 10.
Oh, boy.
November this year for Windows 10.
Okay.
And I would say the server is a $9,000 project.
More like $12,000.
I don't know why it would be that much.
Well, I think that's a starting point.
I can give you the specs for the server, I'm buying now.
I think that's a starting point. Just remember, my proposed budget is within $2 of balance, so anything we move from one place, we got to take from another.
Yep.
Just keep that in mind, no problem, we'll work it out, that's why we're here. Okay, how about the supervisor's office? I also put the training in there. I thought that was important. Contingencies, I put our standard 20. For the clerk's office, it's almost exactly, Jay, the same as last time?
Yeah, I'd like to have another $1,500 for the deputy clerk for elections.
For what?
For elections.
In the clerk part, or in the elections?
In the clerk part.
Okay.
The deputy clerk is the...
Got it.
As the election chairman.
So make that $1,500?
Make it $2,000.
Well, wait a minute.
Would that not be in the elections?
Why wouldn't the deputy clerk be paid under elections?
If she's going to be working elections?
When she's working on elections.
You could do it either way.
Okay, well, let's keep in mind, Steve, we can put it in elections, that's what I suggest.
It doesn't matter to me where it is, it's just, you know...
Okay, well, when we get there, talk about it, okay?
I'm going to say elections is already sure, but that's just me.
Elections needs more money, yes.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so can we move on?
Sure.
What's up to Jay?
Well, you move on as long as we have $1,500 in somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand, I understand. Accounting fees. I know you think we may not use them, but I believe that we're going to be subject to single audit. And that, as the library found out, and I think even the DDA found out, it's very...
Yeah, the DDA has to have $4,000.
Yeah, maybe it wasn't the library, it was the DDA.
Yeah, for a single audit.
Yeah, so, you know, with the existing sewer system, Phase 1 bids in, there was a Phase 2 pre-meeting this morning. I just think it would be wise if we leave that. I mean, we could cut it to 10, if you want, and I think we'd still have enough.
What are you talking about, contingencies?
No, I'm talking about accounting fees.
Accounting fees for under $223.
Yeah, $223-801.
All right, I'm with you, thank you.
So, I mean, we could cut that to 10, and move two of it down to elections, that wouldn't be enough, but that's a start. Is that something you would like to consider?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll change accounting fees to 10 grand instead of 12, and then down there, where it says "election coordinator," which is blank, we'll put down 2 grand for now, till we can find some others. Does that work for everybody, so far?
Yes.
Just so you know, that there's an election chairman and an election coordinator, two different needs. needs.
Okay.
And so when I get down there, we'll clarify it.
Right, and we'll write down our target figures then, okay?
Did you find it, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Jan, Treasure?
Looks like I don't have my tax prep number in here. I haven't received the invitation from KCI yet. But I would say it's gonna cost roughly the same as it did last year.
$231?
Twenty-four hundred?
Yeah, 2,400.
So why don't we get cherish 2,400 this year?
That's a good question.
We'll have to look at it.
So what, when you say tax preparation, what does that mean?
So we have three ways we could get the taxes done. The bills printed, stuffed in envelopes and mailed out. There are 3,600 approximately parcels. KCI, I send them a PDF of all of the bills once I proof them. They take that PDF file, they print it all, stuff it in envelopes, put, get them in the mail, verify all the addresses, do the bulk mailing to save money. And so that's option one. Option two is we let the county do it. They charge more, so I don't know why we would do that. And option number three is we do it in-house. And I don't think we can do it for 2,400.
No, not at all. Okay, so we need a plus up on that line of 2,400.
And then the other thing I would say is that the postage is not gonna go down. I'm, I'm hoping to make a significant headway in getting email addresses so that we don't have to rely on snail mail. I will tell you all, I showed Chris this envelope, I've showed some other people the envelope. The township sent out a bill in 2021. The bill is dated 2021 and it was returned to us with a, and it was postmarked in 2021. And then it sat somewhere until May of 2024 when it was returned to us by the post op. Don't know where it was all of that time.
The North Pole.
So my confidence in, in getting a prompt turnaround, particularly with something like tax bills, totally relying on the US Postal Service is, is not good. And part of that is, has nothing to do with postal service. We have bad addresses. We just have a ton of bad addresses. I have a stack this high of envelopes that I just, you know, I'll try two or three things to get those bills in the hands of the taxpayer. But if I can't find you on Lara or some other way, Amy's gonna work on it through LexisNexis. But every time we send the bill out and it comes back and we send it out again, that's additional postage.
So what do you want that to be?
And, and I will also say that one of the things that, that happened in the past is that we didn't send people receipts. So sending everyone a tax bill, even if their mortgage company paying, is paying it, and sending them a receipt that we actually received payment, has increased our, our postage cost. But I've had a number of good conversations about how things work and people who said that their bill amount is different than what the mortgage told them, the company told them they paid and all kinds of fun stuff. So I think it's important. I'd like to keep that. And I'd like to keep the service. So I, some, I'm gonna, I'm gonna find 2,400 somewhere.
Well, we got the tax preparation, but what about postage?
I, I think the postage has to stay at $9,000.
Okay, so the only thing we just.
I just, I just want to make people aware why that's so much higher than it's been in the past.
Understood. So, so we just need to come up with 2,400 bucks, which we will. We'll, we'll find it, okay. Assessor, I build in that salary request assume, assuming that you would agree. If not, we'll knock it back down to where it was. And that also includes the admin salary, which I reduce slightly because they don't use, you know, they're not using a lot of that money. And using zero-based budgeting, I talked to him about it.
And, and is he paying the county to do his personal property tax prep?
I have no idea. I don't think so.
I thought that's how he, I'll, I'll ask Doug. Cause those, I don't send the personal property tax returns.
Well, even if he needs it, he's got enough wiggle room in here.
Okay.
So is, is that all okay with you? Assessor, we move on to election. Jay?
Can I have a, yes? Do you have an IT request from him for computer hardware?
Yes, it's in here.
Right before?
Uh, $2,000. Where before it was zero. And you want to explain why that's necessary?
Same thing, end of life, Windows end of life, hopefully transitioning to MS365, getting away from the RDP connection for the two of them to work remotely, for anyone to work remotely, including the treasurer. It requires a dedicated computer here onsite in the building with a secure VPN and a secure remote desktop connection.
Okay.
It's just a waste of hardware. So we've got three computers sitting around here waiting for somebody to log in. Then we've got the end of life on the Windows 11, so.
Okay, okay, Jay, shoot.
All right. So we talked about 1,500 more for the deputy clerk. You can either put it there or you can mark down.
We, we plus up election coordinator to 2,000 from zero.
Yep.
We took, we took.
Okay, you need to plus it up to 5,000 because, and I'll explain why in a minute.
Okay.
And then you need to plus up the election workers from 12,000 to 13,500. And then there's still the 1,500 for the deputy clerk or for plus-ing up, you know, the 5,000, 6,500, whatever you want to do. But the, the point is, we just ran an election for the school. We had to put together cost information, hopefully for reimbursement. But I know that we spent at least 7,500 for that election. So that's a good, what I would call example of what it's, illustration of what's gonna cost for the next two, next two elections. So we're gonna spend at least 7,500 in August and we're gonna spend at least another 7,500 in November. So, and both of those are in this next budget here.
Okay.
And we have the same challenges, if you will, that the, that the assessor has and the treasurer has, is we send them on a lot of postage, use a lot of postage. And there's just a lot of, you know, details working through the fact that we don't have good addresses as well in the QBF, so.
So, so on line 101, 262, 704, instead of 12,000 should be what?
13,500.
Should be 13,500.
Okay, and on election coordinator should be?
Five.
Five or 65, depending upon where you want to, you know.
65 is fine.
Maybe 65 then.
Okay, so the difference is, is 8,000?
Yes, that's what I have.
Plus 2,400 for the treasurer, okay? Uh, let me see, election. Okay, so we're on the hunt for 2,400 and 8,000.
Hundred.
Buildings and grounds, frankly, I'm not sure it's gonna be enough. But we have the 2,000, the 200,000 grant, repair renovation grant. And hopefully we'll get some of that accomplished someday. I haven't seen any movement on that. Kind of waiting on the library there. Council was 12. We, we could try to reduce that to 10. I wouldn't recommend it. There is some wiggle room in roads and bridges. Let me give you an example. We're going to strike downtown, hopefully with this year's dollars. I'm waiting to hear back. And that would be under contracted services. So we could, if it comes in, I'm assuming it'll come in. If it doesn't, we're kind of hosed. But we could take 4,000 out of that line and reduce it to two.
Which line are we talking about?
101, 446, 801.
Contracted services.
Streets, highways, contracted services. Cause remember, we can make budget adjustments as we go. First of all, I've been corrected several times by our accountant. We're confusing them. It's no longer budget adjustments.
It's amendments.
It's budget amendments. So we gotta wean off the word budget adjustment.
Language.
Yep. So do you want to take four off of there? Cause that'll help you. Reduce that to two.
So if you, if you had to put it on a probability scale, what's the probability we get it done this year?
50/50.
Why don't we leave it for now and, and kind of go through this and see if we can find another place?
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Streets and highways, contracted services. I'm sorry, road riding. That's probably a good place to be. I wouldn't want to reduce that.
No. It's getting more and more expensive all the time.
Yep.
We're gonna have one road riding in January, not January, in June, roughly the first week of June this year, so it'll be in this budget. And then the second one will be in next year's budget. But then at the end of next year's budget, there'll be a need to do it again. So having two road rides in there is required.
And we have no wiggle room at all on the next one, 31,000. None whatsoever. It's 25 this year and six for the next, for this season and six for the next. Rubbish collection. That includes Community Trash Day. The cemetery, contracting services, it's 8,500. But the good news is that can always be bumped up if the revenue comes in.
Right.
So I don't see any reason to, to cut that or, or bump it up.
And let me ask a question here.
Yeah.
With the software maintenance agreement, I assume we're, we're gonna get rid of one?
Yes.
And we simply have one product?
Yes. Yes. Everybody okay with Sarah's, with Sandra's? Airport. Mark? So Mark took me on a plane ride and I got to see the airport from above. It looks pretty good. Go ahead and talk about the airport.
I just want to, first of all, start off by saying thank you to the board for helping support us. We do a lot on our own, you know, we painted it. The tree cutting helped us get the airport in good condition again, as far as the crack ceiling goes.
And the lines.
That did help the insurance rate too, because it's still in the informational guides that the runway markings are in poor condition. And that's not true. I had to send photos, aerial photos to the insurance lady and that helped. Yeah. So, and I also have to call Grand Rapids and change, get that changed. You've already talked about the insurance. I know we have, the board has decided to charge a, not a landing fee, but a parking fee. How is the board gonna account for those fees?
Go back to revenue.
Yep, 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 yep.
I think we'd probably have to make a new one, wouldn't we?
Yes, I would make a new one. Unless there's.
No, here we are, charges for services, airport. 630, 101, 000, 630.
What's in there now, Chris, do you know?
Oh, I sort of think that's.
P I G.
Snow plowing.
Yes.
Snow plowing.
Right.
But, but it, it doesn't matter. It would go in the same place, right? We're providing a service by allowing them.
And, yes, in this case, I would say yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't always say yes.
So we will account for that.
On the right side of the equation.
And that would stay with the airport to help fund future revenue?
I would hope.
That's, that's what I'm asking, if it's going to be, stay with the airport to help fund airport expenses.
That's possible. It just requires a board decision to do that. And you need to obviously restrict the funds or assign the funds or commit the funds.
Jan?
Yes, I, I mean, we.
What do you think?
I don't have a problem with committing those funds, but.
That and the hangar lease?
I would say that the issue is though that it's, it's a better financial proposition than it has been in the past. But committing those funds to the airport doesn't really change the equation, right? There's still not enough revenue to cover all of the airport expenses.
But we're getting there.
Yes, that's, I said that.
So would that be a discussion when we get closer to budget neutral? Or would that be a discussion that we set that up now?
You, you can do, you can set it up that way now. It's just that.
Well, guess what, folks?
That it's just that the funds are not gonna build up because we're, we're gonna take more than that out and money out of the Township General Fund in order to cover current expenses.
But we are at budget neutral.
For the, for the general fund.
For the general fund.
Right.
Yeah. I'm talking about the airport being a little bit more, it'll never be budget neutral, the airport itself, but we're trying to create.
If we spend, if we spend 5,250 next year on the airport, which is nothing for an airport.
Right.
And then we have 1,500 for shoveling the snow and 5,500 for airport leases, that's 7,000. Well, we're above revenue neutral. Now, it looks like we could put 1,500 away in the, in the bank, so to speak, for emergencies, start a capital improvement fund or something like that. Your general fund's always the backstop. But I'd say thanks to the airport and all the help we got from the hangar owners that we've achieved our objective. I think it's pretty frickin' awesome.
Yeah.
What do you think, Mark?
Well, we do a lot out there.
I do a lot. And the reason we're revenue neutral now is because of everything you guys are doing.
Of course. You know, and I think there are a lot of people who come in and will just be parking there, who don't really own hangars, that have properties on the river, they're tax contributors. I mean, you know, myself, for example, I pay far more in taxes here in Indian River than I do downstate where my primary residence is. And it would just be nice to not have to, I almost feel like we're begging sometimes for funding to justify a, a very viable piece of this community. There are a lot of people who use that airport that most people don't even see, don't realize, even come there, but.
We're trying to give you a bone, Mark, and you're off on a tangent. We all live in this, in this community and we all pay boat launching fees, even though I pay a lot of taxes as well. So let's not go there.
Well.
You're doing a great job.
That's, that's fine.
You're doing a great job. Try to reduce, reduce the costs and make this neutral. So that's my only point is, the, the board shouldn't make this decision during a workshop. We should make this, this decision during another board meeting.
Right.
Relative to how we're going to commit or assign funds on behalf of the, on behalf of the airport as well as on behalf of parks.
Yeah, but, and I agree with that, but by the same token, I just don't want, I just want to make sure that everybody understands in two short years, we got the airport, at least on the operational side, revenue neutral.
And that's appreciated.
Yeah.
And, and that's because these guys sat down with members of this board numerous times, did everything we could, we worked together. And they give, they let us use tens of thousands of dollars worth of equipment that we couldn't afford, so. So, is there anything that I missed in this budget?
Mark, is there anything else that you wanted to say? I know that you got interrupted. Where were you going?
I just think that, you know, I appreciate what you have done to help us in the last couple of years. You know, cleaning out the dead trees in the forest has definitely helped us significantly. But, it just, I wish that there was, I would have the hopes that there would be the foresight to realize that that airport is a viable part of this community. That's my final pitch.
Yeah. Well, I think as long as we keep going down this revenue neutral or revenue positive road, at least operational expenses, maybe not capital improvement. You know, but in my mind, even though it's not separate, you still have money left over from the trees. Because we got 27 for the trees and we got 19, we paid 19 for the striping and the--
Paint. Or the paint of the, the crack ceiling.
Right. Is that holding up okay?
Yeah, it sure is. It's really a very good job. It did far superior to what we've had done in years previous.
And that's been necessary for years to get that done. I mean, that's been hanging out there for a while to try to get that funded and we got it done this year.
Yeah, and what it was done, done previously, it was done like as inexpensively as possible, but it just didn't hold up.
Like, it's not new to your driveway.
It didn't hold up.
Right.
This will help preserve the runway, you know, and it's something that was needed.
Right. And for safety reasons, if nothing else, because it was making the whole connect just--
It would've crumbled.
Yes, it was starting to. And, and on top of that, we got the painting done, so it's a safer thing for everybody when they're traveling, cause you can't see the end of the runway. That was explained to me, without the lines there, that makes you see the end of the, otherwise you're going, and then all of a sudden, it's there, you know, the end. And so, that was very important, cause you're, you're flying towards the expressway. I mean, literally, and you gotta be able to see--
Have you gotten any feedback from pilots about the wind shear now that the trees are gone?
Well, I flew in yesterday and the winds were pretty strong. There was like a 40-degree crosswind coming at me at like 18 to 22, so--
But--
I would say it was much better. It was much better. You know, the hill still plays a factor.
Okay.
But, once you get down and you're pretty much beyond the hill, it seemed to be a lot more consistent. You know, a lot more effect, a less effect from the wind.
Cause I think, as Mr. Redmond explained to me, you line up on the runway based on the current wind, and then the minute you get by the tree line, the height of the tree line, everything changes and you're having to correct.
And if you look around, there are very few airports in the country that have trees that close to the runway. It just isn't a very safe environment. Not to mention the deer and the other, you know, wildlife that migrate onto the runway or in the vicinity.
Is there anything else we can do?
Nope, we're good.
Well, listen, I really appreciate you and I'm sure we all appreciate you--
We appreciate the guys, all their work.
Coming all the way up here.
Yeah.
And, and taking care of this. I know you didn't wanna do it at first and I appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
And thank you for contacting the insurance company and following--
Yeah.
Glad to do it.
Because with, you know, doing that work and putting a little bit more money into fixing the cracks, definitely paid off in the long run with the insurance.
Everything helped.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so next is parking wreck. I did change their original budget from the fourth line. Everything from the fourth line down, I did not change. So, everything they asked for, repairs and maintenance, recreation, fertilizer, supplies, all of that stuff, I left alone. But in good conscience, I left the salaries at $130,000, because I'm, I'm looking at what's been spent to date. And I, in my mind, I just can't justify another $17,000. I mean, if, if they spend that amount of money down the road, the board could make budget amendments, gotta get that right. But somehow, we gotta balance the budget. And $231,000 is a lot of money. And yes, some of that money's used on non-parks stuff.
We did some CIPs in the last couple of years, that's helped a lot.
A lot. Two from eight.
We got you a truck. That's a good--
So, that's what, about 28%?
Of the entire budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. Sounds about right.
That's a lot of money. I do wanna talk about parks some more when we get to CIP. Doug and I have been working on something we would like to speak with you about. Doug, do you have any comments?
We, uh, this'll be the first year, summer season I'm going into with fully staff.
Congratulations.
Where we're in front of a shortage of person.
Congratulations.
Well, smile about that.
Yeah.
Well, he's, he's, you've been working overtime this week, haven't you? Why don't you tell folks what it takes? I, I want folks to understand where this money's going to. Tell them everything you've done this week, just to get ready for Memorial Days. Got the buoys in yet?
No.
Tomorrow?
We'll start out with that.
I don't know if we'll make that one for the weekend.
Yeah, too cold?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't want anybody getting sick.
No, we're just getting everything, it's no different than any other year. Just getting two cemeteries up, going, get the boat launch, or the kayak launch in, get everything--
Oh, it's in?
Yep. It's done.
Good job on the steps, by the way.
Thank you.
The cemeteries do look great. I was up there the other day and they looked really good.
We just finished up Ohioville today.
How'd you like the flowers that Nancy and I and Janet planted?
Nice.
I'd like to plant some more all the way along, along that fence, you know, going back. If, if we could get the volunteers to do that again this year. You wouldn't have any objection to that, would you?
No. You don't want them all mulched?
Yeah. No, no, we don't want them mulched. You just, actually, you cut them down when they die.
Yeah.
Same as at the boat launch, you just weed whack them out of there.
Draking fountain is great. Some new drinking fountain.
Oh, that is nice. It's great. Very nice.
And Doug, if you like, if you love Hideaway Park like I do, families like to stop their boats, Doug's gonna put in a grill down there for us. He found an excess bill on grill and saved us some money. And the flowers did come up. Finally.
That'll be a good improvement down there. There's a lot of families that hang out down there and just watch boats fly.
There used to be one there.
Yeah.
Did, did, somebody sold it?
I don't know.
They probably rusted out.
I just remember being there years ago.
Did we get Lower Marina Park done?
They haven't done it yet, but they told me that would be done before we got riding.
They agreed to have it done by tomorrow.
Well, check tomorrow.
Would you call her for me? And say, Bob said you promised by Memorial Day that we would have this done.
I saw them working there today.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Well, she's usually good to her word, so we'll see. Okay, any other comments?
No.
All right, so we go to the next one. That turns out to be pretty simple. We don't do the boat launch anymore. But I do wanna point out, we didn't have a number, Chris, correct, for Navinoy. So, we temporarily put our share in buildings and grounds, correct?
Jan saw where we had it today. I don't remember where she saw it.
I saw the revenue side.
Oh.
She saw the revenue side, but we--
But, that's a holding place too. We've gotta move that back into the special assessment.
Right. Because we didn't have a number like an O, 970-08 Navinoy Trail, we just stuck it temporarily in buildings and grounds.
Thank you. I wonder what that was.
So, that's where that figure comes from. So, if we go back through this real quick, we got, we got a delta that we gotta solve. We, we gotta get 2,400, let me get something to write. We gotta get $2,400 for, let's see, we cut $2,000 out of accounting. We need $2,400 more for tax prep.
$8,000 for elections.
And $8,000 for elections. Did I miss anything?
No, I think we're good.
So, I would ask you to just take a second, scrub all this again, and find out where we're gonna come up with $10,400. We could reduce my pay to seven grand and that would cover--
In, in calculating the revenue for the tax admin fee, does that include the set payment, which was about $8,500 last year?
I don't remember.
Okay.
I mean, we could check into.
That doesn't change the calculus here, it's just that I, he's, if he's gonna be revenue neutral, I wanna make sure that we've accounted for that roughly $8,500, that we get in addition to the tax admin fee. And I don't remember either.
So, Bob, we're, Bob, we're probably gonna, we're supposed to get $7,500 for elections.
Oh, we need to pump that in there then.
From the school system, but it's, I can't tell you when it's gonna arrive.
But it'll be, it'll be--
Next year.
Next year, right?
Right, but I would accrue that revenue to this year, because it belongs to this year.
Either way, it'll be in the general fund.
Right, but if we're, if--
But, that's what you gotta do, that's right.
Oh, so we can't put it in this budget?
That, we could, but I'm gonna pretty much guarantee that when the auditors get around to doing the audit, they'll make us accrue it back to this year.
Okay.
Yeah. So, if we just wanna save the trouble, we could just do that ourselves.
Well, one thing that I--
So, wait a second. So, for the school to have their special election, it was $7,500?
Yes. At least then, there's other townships that have to pay additional, or head, head costs as well.
I'll tell you where there's some money, but we don't have the power to enact it. Okay? There's a massive shortage in this community of boat slips. People are begging for boat slips. And the Parks Commission had an opportunity to rent out two or three boat slips and make $2,300 to $2,500 a slip. And they didn't do it. You do three slips, that's not gonna solve the problem, but that's $7,500 in revenue that could, could've been going to parks.
And there would've still been slips for visitors and stuff, so--
But we can't put that in there, cause we don't have control over the, the boat slips.
Okay, so since we're looking at, we did talk about the internal audit fee, we had it bumped up to 12. You said we could put it down to 10. You thought there'd still be enough money for that?
Yeah.
In that. So, let's take $2,000 from that, that's what I'm recommending.
I thought we already did that.
Yeah, I, I got, here's what I got. $2,000 from there negative, right? And $10,400. So, we have $10,400. We have to come up with $8,400 more dollars.
Okay.
Now, one thing I did not do, because, you know, I, I have to use, in this way we do it, I have to use past performance. We have nothing under interest income.
Yeah, you should put some money in there.
But are you gonna be able to do it in time?
That in time for this budget? Yes.
Okay. And how much do you think we should put in there? I mean, our low point, you know, our low point's gonna go way, way up when we get reimbursed by the sewer?
Yes.
Right? And that's gonna--
You got a date for that to happen?
I, I would say we're gonna, Chris, Janet, we--
Probably--
Close on phase one, August?
Uh, sooner. May, probably sooner.
July?
Yeah. And then phase two, probably August. Because they're expecting to have shovels in the ground for phase one in August and shovels in the ground in September. Isn't that what you said?
August or September?
For phase two.
I mean, just like, right now, we got 80 grants sitting in the EPA. Right? And then if we get reimbursed from USDA for everything else--
Shows we signed for the loans.
Yeah, we're looking at 400 grand.
Yeah, immediately.
And, you know, that could hopefully be used by the board for infrastructure. So, Madam Treasurer?
Uh, let's throw eight in there. There's a challenge.
400 times 5%.
In revenue?
Why not 10? And then we're, then we're negative--
Cause I don't wanna lie.
Okay. How about, would you take nine?
Jay and I just did the same math.
Would you take nine?
No, I think she's right, so.
Would you take 8,400?
Um, is the Fed Reserve gonna cut rates between now and November?
No.
Cause there's a lot of pressure to do that, but I don't think they will. So, I, I'm--
And you go to a longer-term bond to make up for it. Cause you can get your money back in two days on a treasure, if you need it.
I, I, I'm, I'm saying that on average, I'm gonna have $400,000 to invest at 5%. That gets me eight grants, that's right.
Well, if you could say 8,400, we're done with the exercise.
I know.
So, when do you think the school will pay us? I mean, they've gotta have some kind of a timeframe.
So, what I'm saying is--
It doesn't matter when they pay.
It doesn't matter. So, we earned that money in May.
Because it happened in the past fiscal year.
The revenue goes with May.
This, this money, so this, this is, goes in this budget that's right now.
It'll ultimately go in the general fund, but Jan is correct, in terms of revenues, we can't have--
Okay, so, Chris, add $8,000 to 101-000-665 under the revenue side.
Okay.
Folks, we're $400 short.
Okay.
Just split it across all of it.
It's close enough.
No.
Take it, take it out of each of the, each area.
Hang on a minute.
Why don't you take $100 out of the education funds for the three? Yeah, $500--
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Let's just look at this.
I don't think we need to do it here, Bob. I think we can come up with--
We have another meeting on the port, yes.
Yeah, but, but that is to pub, that is to have a public hearing. So, we have to pretty much have a, a budget to put up online this weekend, cause we have to run the newspaper ad next week.
Good point.
So, if, if we can just find $400, we're in like Flint. Boy, that's an old saying. Let me just look a little bit.
Just find out any place that has a $50 and run it down to the next lowest level and take it $400.
Doug, how's the price of propane going?
$187.
Up or down?
Right now, it's pretty cheap, probably. The winter's gonna be, I won't use it. How do I know what it's gonna be? I mean--
Yeah, but don't you fill it up now?
We're on it. Cause they got a monitor right on there and they come when it goes down. They all just got filled recently.
Okay.
So, I'll skirt out the winter.
Crystal Flash's current contract, if you wanna pay the contract upfront, is one eighty-seven.
So-
Go in it.
So, so I spent five ninety-something for your new computer, Bob, so just take it out of the, take it out of IT, that we've got spent this year.
What, on my side?
Yeah.
I think I took it out already.
It's already out.
It's already out.
I'd say take it out of the training.
I'd say take a hundred dollars out of every, all the training, that's three hundred dollars right there.
So how about if we just lower IT for the township to twelve thousand five hundred dollars and call it a day?
Okay.
What's the GL number?
Uh, one oh one nine, one oh one, one oh one, nine eighty.
Thank you.
So if you could do those figure scores, we'll go on with the police.
So what, what are we changing that to?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Twelve five.
So, we should be neutral-
Yeah.
Right now.
Uh, when you're all done, and Chris, if you could print those out for us while we're doing the cops?
I don't have access, I don't think, to print it, and I have, I'm running the whole, all of the budget as one document, not the department.
But once you add the figures in, can't you go into my office?
Oh yeah, I could do that.
And, and, and print it out, just the GL? Okay. Okay, Chief, you're up.
I'm gonna hot seat.
Yeah.
Chief, I-
By the way, thank you for going out there on that blight investigation with me, that was quite an education.
Was it the ticks that got you, or just the-
That's part of it.
No, the ticks are fine.
We both think that covered your ticks. Me too. Alright, so, uh-
Chief, before you get started, before you get started, first of all, I wanna thank you and your officers for everything you do every day, putting your life on the line, but please don't take anything I'm gonna say today personal, cause it's not personal. We just wanna make sure that we're doing right by everybody, especially the task payer, but as I've told you many times before, my number one concern is the promise that many of this people at this table have made to the citizens of this township to reduce the liability and help our officers. If I understand correctly, we have five officers retiring in five years, correct?
Uh, yes.
So my concern is that, in my opinion, we need to do more to pay this down quicker. Because, like, I'm seeing a, a, eleven hundred dollars in the, one point one million dollars in the general fund. I know that's not right, I think it's more like eight right now? Is that what we looked at?
Eight, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand for the fund balance.
You know, I know, by the way, get that infested, and you got some money to help pay down, but-
We talked about that on Saturday.
So, I wanted to ask you, what, what do you think our low point is during the skinny season? Or is there a new term I should be using?
Skinny, skinny season works for me, so my low point is usually in December.
And this last December, I had five hundred thousand dollars. Okay. So-
Left in my fund balance, because I do operate off my fund balance from July one till taxes, taxes come in in December.
Okay.
Five hundred thousand dollars this year, right in December, we pulled those numbers, and, and that was what I left, or had left in my fund balance.
Is that good or bad? I mean, was that good for you, I mean?
Well, years ago, you were negative.
Yeah?
You were borrowing from parks.
Yes, we were.
I would hope five hundred thousand would be good.
So, I agree, there is definitely an issue with the retirement system, and I've might have some solutions. This year, I'm actually presenting a budget of four point five mils.
Okay.
Last year was four point two, obviously, we all know that the property values are a little higher this year.
Yes, sir.
This particular one, I'm budgeting this year three hundred thousand dollars for retirement.
Now, does that include?
That's going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra than what we would normally pay, okay?
That's a good chunk towards that.
It, it is.
What is the balance that we owe on that, do you know?
Uh, right around, a little over, somewhere around nine hundred thousand?
No, you're down to about eight, twenty-five, eight thirty-five.
Okay, that's good, cause that was sort of different than the last time you said it.
That was a year ago, and that's, that's at the end of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, so you make your regular payments of a hundred and fifty, but you're gonna put in an additional one fifty?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
This year, out of my fund balance, I would like to take two hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance, along with the money that we still have not sent, which is about a hundred thousand dollars, in June, make one big lump sum payment.
This June?
This June.
And that saves on interest by doing that?
Of?
Of-
Three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so we would have-
By June thirtieth?
Two hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance.
Uh huh.
It was eight, I mean, eight seventy-nine, six seventy-nine was still be in my fund balance. Two hundred thousand dollars plus the hundred thousand dollars that I currently have in this year's budget, that has not went to MERS yet, one big lump sum payment of three hundred thousand.
So that would be, over the next six months, you would be putting in four hundred and fifty?
Over the next six weeks.
So, we would be putting three hundred thousand by the end of June.
Right, but then, in the next year's budget-
Correct.
You can put in another hundred and fifty.
Correct.
Over and above your monthly requirement.
Absolutely.
So that's gonna be four fifty.
And remember, this year, I also, there's gonna be a large chunk left in wages, because I worked the road for eleven months.
That, that's not acceptable, but we'll talk about that.
So, when we get towards the end of the year, if I can come to the board and say, hey, look, I saved the township, you know, forty-five thousand dollars this year, we can take that out of wages and put that towards the retirement as well.
Okay.
That'd be awesome.
That would be great.
So, now we're really getting that up.
Yeah.
Out of this four point five mils, there is a new officer included in that, a new full-time officer. We are at that pivotal point right now, where most of my officers have been here for twenty years. With all of the vacation time and the sick time that they get every year, it is equivalent to two thousand three hundred and twenty hours. I'm the guy-
That, that's a man year.
It, well, two thousand eighty hours is a man year.
Yeah, two thousand eighty is, is the federal estimate for a man year.
Correct, and who is the guy that fills in on all the vacations? That would be me. It is actually getting to the point where I-
And then when you-
I don't have time to do my administrative duties.
But another point is when you include training and administrative tasks, you're really only at sixteen fifty to seventeen hundred, if you're lucky. So that, that, that twenty eighty, that's just the total number of hours for the year.
Correct.
But productive hours is far, far less because of training and admin.
Correct, and we are required to do forty hours of training per year.
Yeah, but you have other admin stuff that you also have to do.
Well, this last pay period, myself, I worked ninety-six hours, and I got paid for eighty. And that's been pretty common lately.
You just rave at your family as you go by, I mean-
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Sounds like, uh-
So do you need an admin assistant, is that what you're, you're saying?
I actually have an administrative assistant.
Do you need another admin assistant?
No, I need another full-time police officer to work the road.
To get you off the road.
To get me off the road.
And it's not just that, it's just planning ahead too, for the fact that you're gonna have people retiring, and so you wanna have skills and abilities in there when people do leave.
Two years, Officer Johnson can go, Officer Lulun can go. In three years, Officer Myerson can go, then Sergeant Blump is going, and then myself, all within the next five years.
It's called planning ahead.
And I am really working on trying to get younger individuals in here that's going to be here for twenty-five, thirty years.
Well, my concern is you can't take care of business if you're out on the road and you're working Saturday and Sunday, and then you're not here Tuesday and Wednesday, or, for example.
Monday and Tuesday, yep, or I'm stuck in court for two days.
Where's the chief? Well, he's off, cause he had to work the road.
Well, yeah, last week you had to be in court two days, didn't you?
Yep, and I worked the last two weekends.
Yeah.
And then I can't, you know, they earn their vacation time, I can't just deny it all the time. Last year, Officer-
Well, you're gonna pay it up in overtime then.
Officer Johnson last, well, and that's the problem though, is that, you know, these guys work so much, it's when you post the overtime, and again, we've all got twenty-some years in, a lot of those guys don't wanna work the overtime.
Can't blame them. How much do you think you do in overtime?
Uh, well, or, or how about, how much vacation time do I donate back every year? Because I don't get a chance to use that. Officer Johnson donated fifty-five hours back last year, last year I donated back thirty-two hours, because it's either use it or lose it, such a, you know, situation.
But you're only showing seventy-five hundred dollars in overtime.
Uh, correct, because a lot of it goes, they don't work for overtime, they work for comp time.
Oh.
So-
Comp time still costs you money in the long run.
I tell them that all the time.
It still costs money in the long-
Comp time, overtime, doesn't matter what it is, it still costs us.
It costs us money in the long run.
Yep, still, still costs time and a half.
I hate comp time. It's an administrative nightmare.
I live it every day. Um, the other thing in this budget is a, under equipment, is a, it's a new command trailer. That is something that we found out would be very, very useful for our department. Last winter, we had that fatal fire where we were on scene for, what, fourteen, sixteen hours in the-
Did we get a cause on it again?
Not a cause, but he, he definitely went by smoke inhalation.
Well, let me ask you the obvious question, is this a redundant thing that should be provided by the county?
You mean, because they have a command vehicle?
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, if, I mean, they would probably bring it, but are they gonna bring it to us in the middle of the night? Cause only certain, certain administrative, administrators actually have the keys to that vehicle. This is just a trailer, it's a legend trailer, it's actually set up like a little office inside, it's got heat, air conditioning, it just gets everybody out of the elements. We were sitting out there on that scene, it was very, very windy, very, very cold that night. It would give our firefighters, when they're, you know, taking a break, they can step in the trailer, take their fire gear off, get warmed up.
That probably would've helped with the condos.
Yes.
And, and when we had those bad accidents on, at three thirteen?
Oh yeah.
About last year or the year before?
Yeah, so when I think of a trailer, I'm thinking about all these electronics, computers, radios-
It will be wired.
Tens, twenties, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars worth of electronics.
No, it, it, this automatically comes wired, it's got wired with one ten, it's run off of a suitcase generator, one gallon of gas that lasts like eight hours.
And it eats the place?
Um, yes, yep, and it's got air conditioning in it, this one here, particular one that I picked out, or am looking at, it's got windows in it. It, it, literally, you walk in, it's like a little miniature office, we can stick an eight hundred meter-
Can you put victims in there until the EMT arrives and that kinda stuff, keep them?
Yep.
What other uses could you use that for in the community?
Promotional things, we could, you know, set it up when we're doing, like, we have a, a safety thing coming up down at Cooperation Park. I know the Chilwell County Sheriff's Department, they're bringing their dive trailer down, so the kids can go through the dive trailer. You know, promotional things like that, we'd use it.
Yeah, fourteen thousand seems pretty cheap, is it? How big is it?
It's a twenty-three foot.
Really? Have you got something to pull it with?
Uh, Chevy Tahoe.
Oh, does that have enough pulling power?
Oh yeah, yeah, that's on a truck frame, so, yeah.
So, so the, uh, the GWGR fits and all that?
Yes.
Where would you store it?
Well, probably right here in the parking lot, but the snowmobile trailer's gonna go.
Where's it?
That's the other thing too, that snowmobile trailer's on its last legs.
Where's it going?
Well, I'm hoping it's gonna go over by the red barn. And store it over there, but I would like to store the snowmobile-
Smile on Doug's face.
I'd like to put the snowmobile in up at the cemetery.
Well, sure, that's what the building was renovated for.
Yeah, it's got the wide doors on it, you could get a snowmobile-
How much is a new trailer for the snowmobile?
Well, if we can get this command trailer, we could kinda use it for dual, double usage.
What?
Really?
Yeah, I can, the whole back thing comes down, you can pull a snowmobile right up in there.
Oh!
So it's got a ramp?
Yes.
So you don't need an additional snowmobile?
Well, I would need a trailer, yes.
But that might-
But you wouldn't need an additional?
No. No, it would, it would serve as dual purpose.
So what do you do in the winter, you just put the snowmobile in that trailer?
Yep.
And it's ready to go?
It's all ready to go. There's a lot of time on a snowmobile accident, you're gonna need the snowmobile and the trailer there anyway.
Or if you have a fire and there's a lot of snow. So you're actually killing two birds with one stone.
Correct.
It's under the fifteen thousand capital improvement plan ceiling, so you could just put it in your budget and buy it.
Which is what I did this year.
Oh, okay, where, where would that be?
It's under equipment light item, two oh seven, three oh one, nine seven seven, second page.
Fourteen grand?
Four, well, it's actually, should be fourteen eight, uh-
Two oh seven, three oh one, nine seven seven, we have thirty thousand in there.
Yes, there's thirty thousand on that. Um, and that's also to outfit the new patrol car when it gets here.
Right, body cams.
Body cam fund, we're, that's actually funded by something totally different. That's our OWI reimbursement.
Oh, well, that's new.
Every time we make a rest on OWI-
That's new, right?
We bill it, and then they, we get reimbursed, and that goes up into the revenue section, under OWI reimbursements.
Let's talk about blight, if you don't mind. I know that I asked you to review the blight ordinance.
Yes.
And I got some little office help and some other MTA sample ordinances, but I guess what I'm concerned about, is there something you need, even if it's part-time, or some kind of equipment, or something that could help with blight?
A full-time officer would help me tremendously with blight. Because our school resource officer can get out of school and go right to blight work.
And there's a lot of it, trust me, there's a lot of it out there.
I can't keep up with it, and I drive all over this township.
And I'm kinda being lenient with the toddler grass right now, it's just because people aren't quite here yet.
I understand.
Right, and, and it's growing so fast, it's not only-
Well, yeah, but a lot of it-
It's an unusual spring.
I went all over today, and most of it doesn't meet the six-inch criteria yet anyway.
I drove around today, and there were several that met their six-inch criteria.
Yeah, there's some out there, but I think, as people get up here, it'll get knocked down, so.
In fact, I had one lady call me earlier this week, she was complaining about her neighbor's grass, and then she sent me an email, sent me another email with pictures, and within an hour, they arrived up to their house, and the first thing they did was pull a lawnmower out and cut the grass, and she's like, boy, you didn't even get here yet, it's been taken care of.
Yeah, it's a good idea, just to lighten up a little bit on that, get people to get involved in that.
Yeah, but I, as I said earlier in my comments, I'm very concerned about these repeat offenders. I mean, we keep giving them out. Never mind.
Well, there's, there's several properties that-
Now, how about we go-
I've been working with chief a little bit, and there's several properties that people don't even live in our township, and they're using our township as a dump station for their crap. And that's a big issue, and we need to get on that, that's, we're not someone else's dumping ground, you know? I mean, there are, there are places that you can take the stuff to, or store it, or let other counties worry about it, but-
Price of scrap metal right now is through the roof.
I know.
Cash it in.
But we're dealing with orders, and that's, that's the issue.
Like on Barbara Avenue, we got that unregistered boat sitting in the driveway, been there for years.
Well, that's minor compared to what we saw the other day.
Oh yeah. And you go to try and look at it, and you got, you get, end up with ticks all over you.
Yeah.
So I did wanna discuss with you, with the board here, it's not exactly budget-related, but when we have a big blight case like we have coming up, where we're finally enforcing this court order, I mean, we're talking a lot of money, how much, I mean, do you even have a guess what that, what Ron made charges?
I have no idea, I'll have a better answer for you Wednesday morning at sometime between six and eight o'clock in the morning, it's coming up.
So, so, let's, let's just pick a number, twenty-five thousand, right? How do we pay for that? Do you pay for it? Do we pay for it? Cause I know we get our money back eventually.
Correct.
You see where we're going with this, Jan?
Typically, the township has paid for it, and then it goes on the tax bill. In fact, I actually think it says that in our blight ordinance, that it would come out of the general fund.
It does say that, general fund?
And then it gets put onto the tax bill.
Okay. So we don't use your money-
So you have to give them the one opportunity to pay, so you would have to send them a bill.
Right.
If they refuse to pay that bill, then it comes out of the general fund, we pay the, the people who came and cleaned it all up, it goes right on their tax bill.
Well, why wouldn't we pay the contractor immediately, and then we collect the money by sending them a bill?
Well, and you could do it that way too, it's just they have to be billed one time and then not pay it.
And then it goes to the county?
And then it goes right, it goes right on the tax bill.
Do we get our money back the minute it goes to the county?
Depends on when that happens, so, the tax bills from the summer are available to pay here in the township until February fourteenth, fifteenth. Have to look at next year's calendar, I don't know what day that falls on. And then, after the fifteenth, there's a, there's an additional penalty, and then in March, I settle up with the county, and then in, in late March, early April, the county then buys those accounts and does their own collections.
I move that we accept the police budget as written.
Support.
Support.
Support. Any more discussion?
Did you have anything else we were talking?
Um, no, I don't. If we're gonna approve the budget, can I get a motion for the new officer and a vote, please?
Yeah, well, I was gonna get to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Also, I have one other question before we get to the vote. Is there anything else that you can use, or Doug for that matter, too? The cemetery building now has been re-purished and everything. I mean, it's a pretty good, it's got that super wide door, you know, wider than normal because of previous having to put caskets.
I would love to get my new snowmobile out of that trailer in the summertime in the hot, hot heat.
Yeah.
And get it in that building where it remain cool.
Yeah, because the shade will keep it cooler and stuff. Okay, is there anything else you can use that building for that you know of? Because it is, it's, it's pretty large space in there.
I don't know how big it is. Actually, I haven't went out and looked at it. I mean, if I could get my snowmobile trailer in there, I would just back the trailer and everything in that.
Not sure.
The door's not quite that big.
Eight-inch door.
Yeah.
Door's not high enough.
The door's pretty, pretty wide, but it's not enough to get a trailer in there. But that, that building is available now as far as storage is concerned, and I just want to see it utilized, because that's what we, we redid it for, is to use it for that. Is that furnace still in there, that little heater thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we might want to put that out for sale.
Fuel, you know, if I want a fuel furnace?
Somebody might want it, you know? Scrap it, so, okay.
Is the board okay with the two hundred thousand out of the fund balance?
We'll get to that.
To retire, okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that if we can get some money squared away and invested and earned.
And you were gonna get me some numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve that police budget is written.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we authorize the police chief to seek another hire during the next fiscal year.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we authorize the chief to buy his multi-use trailer.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Anything else?
What about the two hundred thousand from the fund balance?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, okay.
Well, you, you put that in your, that's in your budget, though, right?
For record purposes, we support this, but at what price? I just want to write down the amount of money here. So hiring an officer, I get that. We understand that. Who purchased the trailer at what cost?
Fourteen thousand eight hundred.
Okay, fifteen grand.
Close enough.
Fifteen, well...
Just shy of fifteen grand, hold on there.
I know, yeah. I understand. Fifteen, yeah.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry. And then, what was it, what was the next motion?
New hire.
New hire.
I got that. Who, who seconded the new hire?
Jan did.
All right. Who, who seconded the, what's the trailer?
Jan.
Jan did.
All right. And what other motion did we miss?
Uh, just the, the budget itself, we passed, Bob made the motion, Jay...
I got that, yeah.
I, I don't think we need, do you want us to direct you to invest the money, is that?
No, I was thinking the two hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance.
Yeah, do you want us to direct you to do that? Is that what you're asking?
So, anything out of the fund balance has to be approved by the board.
I'm sorry?
Anything out of my fund balance has to be approved by the board.
Jan, you're smart, why don't you make that?
I move that we approve a disbursement from the, the fund balance in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars as a catch-up payment against the retirement plan liability for the police department.
Is there a support?
I support it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need anything to pay the extra money for next year?
Um, no, because it'll be here in the budget. You've already approved that.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for stepping up and getting, bringing that forward. I know you really run a tight ship over there.
Well, thank you.
We're very, we're very thankful for the kind of discipline you show in, in your budgeting. So I'm sure that you may have thought this was your, no, I shouldn't say it that way. You treat, you treat the money as, as if it were your personal funds. And so I think that's just a, a great thing, and we appreciate you coming forward to helping us get this liability behind us.
Thank you. And then in June, maybe we'll talk about what's left over in the wage account.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, chief. Have a nice evening.
Appreciate your patience.
Can we take a five-minute break, please? That way Chris can prepare for us to go back to the general fund so we can approve it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, five minutes. Short five minutes.
You have to save it before you print it, because it doesn't change.
There you go.
You have to save it before you print it.
Give me a five over here, too.
Um, everybody get a chance to look this over. If we pass this budget tonight, this will be the second year in a row that this board has, have a balanced general fund budget. I want to say that so everybody can hear me.
Say it again.
If this board passes this general fund budget, it will be the second year in a row that this general fund budget has been balanced.
Yay!
And I think that's a hell of an accomplishment, instead of being twenty or thirty percent over. And, and I will tell you, I don't want to lay it on too thick, because then people ask me for favors, but the airport specifically, and parks specifically, has a very big, gets a very big bunch of kudos for getting this thing balanced, because without the airport and the parks, we'd have never got this balanced. And the beauty of this is we're actually being able to take care of some infrastructure, especially on west side and north side dirt roads. We got a long way to go, but it's been a heck of a thing. Could I ask you real quick, is it Tuesday or Wednesday for brownie?
Nope, it's, I'm sorry. It's gonna be the first of June, first week in June.
Oh, okay.
Because we spent money on the gravel, and the, and the county had to get the gravel road work done first, then we can do the brownie.
So they didn't complete it?
No.
In time? Well, hey, they did what they could.
And, and just a side note, I went down Wobbin Road, which is normally crazy, oh, I'm gonna put this down here, hold on. Yes, I went down Wobbin Road to see the new gravel, and that has made that road a hundred times better than what it ever has been.
Yeah, the worst road was at the end of Chip Wobbe Beach Road where it goes to dirt.
Yeah, it was swishy.
And not anymore.
Not anymore, no. And there was a couple other little spots that would be swishy from the, even from the buses, you know, school buses driving on them all the time and everything, and it just made them full of ruts of poples and made them real swishy and stuff, and it is wonderful.
So, is there any change?
I have a question.
Yes.
Before we get started, I wanted to ask this, and...
Sure.
With everything going on, so about these boat slips, that would be parks that would be in charge of?
The parks would be the ones that would have...
Have restriction?
Uh, have to make a motion and pass the motion to have the boat slips running. There's no restriction by the Michigan Department of Agriculture that gave us the grant. I got it, I got, I talked to her three times, and I got it in writing.
So why couldn't we take money away from parks and have them do that, and change and run in our budget?
Well, we did take money from parks. We, we took money from their...
We took some.
We took seventeen thousand from their...
Request.
Uh, from their request for people.
Yeah.
So, they can make, you know, if they rent three slips, that's only gonna be about seventy-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, but seventy-five hundred dollars is seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and it solves a problem.
I mean, that's...
But we don't have the authority to do anything, other than what you're saying is, we can decrement your budget.
Yeah.
Uh, but we already decremented their budget, so...
I know, but I think we should work around and take more.
You can certainly make that motion, that's why we're, and where would it come from? Let me dig in here. Because my concern is with the rising cost of fertilizer, boy, we use a lot of fertilizer.
And let me say, I, I went to the parks meeting where they worked on their budget.
Yeah.
Had I been mindful of this problem with, we did talk about revenue sources, and I'll get to that in a minute, but on the expense side, I think they did a, a very good job of going through line by line and working from zero to the numbers that they have.
No, I'm not poo-pooing that. I, I'm thinking that this is a very easy way to get money.
Well, but, but cutting their expenses doesn't increase their revenue, right? So, and, and adding, if they were to meet tomorrow and put the boat slips in, that would increase revenue, but it wouldn't change the expense structure for parks. I, I would say the other issue is, is that parks, that when I was there, the conversation led me to believe that there are people in the community who are not in favor of some of the methods that parks has suggested that they could use to raise revenue, so...
Oh, that's true, too.
You know, we, there, we want to run out Cooperation Park for tournaments, but we don't want to run it out all the time, because we want it to be available to...
The public.
The, the local people who are not part of the tournament. I, I think there's still opportunities there to, to, to help with both the expense side and the revenue side, but I, I think we're gonna be putting ourselves in a, in a bad position by, by trying to cut more from parks right now. I mean, it's a flat budget. They're not asking for an increase.
Well, you use ZBB principles, right?
Right.
So, so what, what, what she did is, she worked with them to start at zero.
Yeah.
And we still cut them. Any more discussion on this before I make a motion? I, I move we approve the general fund budget.
I'll support that.
Support by Jan. Any more discussion?
Can you talk about pay setting?
I will. All in favor?
Just before we do all in favor?
Yes.
Could you summarize what that budget number is?
Revenue, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Expenses, including capital improvements, uh, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents, with a balance, a positive balance...
Yoo-hoo!
...of one hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Good job.
Can you say capital improvements? Is there a capital improvement budget in addition to that?
Not yet, we haven't got to that yet.
How much was the revenue, again?
Uh, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents.
All right, so should we vote on that?
Yes, we should.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I move pay setting. We increase, I move that we increase the assessor's salary by two and a half percent.
I'd second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we increase the administrative assistance pay to, to thirty dollars an hour.
Support.
Any discussion? I got discussion. I, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for this woman. I'm just telling you, I'd have never got through this. She has made so many improvements in that office, and now's the time for board members to speak out if you have any feelings about her performance. It's one of the few people I've never had tell me no.
Well...
Because she tells me no, and I don't even know it. She says, but Bob, you should do this. So she's not telling me no, she's making positive suggestions on how to get it done the right way.
No, Chris is exceptional. She's casting, looking, and striving to make improvements every single day, and still trying to find problems that need to be fixed, and trying to take a look at what we can do to even increase the level of professionalism we're trying to bring to the office, so...
And if you make a mistake, she'll let you know. And that's important.
And not, not only that, I, I just want everybody to know, when she came on board, we used to have piles of papers in every office and boxes of stuff sitting around. The record room, you couldn't hardly walk through. She, with some help from Nancy, organized our whole file system and, in every office, and...
And you and Mary.
And, and, yes, and Mary, and, and, and they worked on the records room, and it's like you walk in there, like, holy man, this is great, now we can find what we're looking for. And so she has went above and beyond. That was a lot of work, going up and down them steps, carrying boxes of records and getting rid of records that was, was past their prime, so to speak. And, and today, she was involved in the pre-planning of the bid process for the sewers, and she is, with some help, she is organizing the accounting practices that we're going to have to do for the numerous funding sources that we have for, for that, and the, the reporting that's gonna be necessary for the three projects, phase one, phase two, and the plant. And that is going to, unless that is organized ahead of time, it will be an accounting nightmare for whoever handles that. And it doesn't necessarily fall on the treasurer or the clerk, because it's non-seditory duty. So therefore, you know, we gotta make sure that it is there, in place, ready to go, and the SAD's roles are ready to, to go. And when we sign for the loan, if we get to that part, we have not voted on that, but if we do, all that has to be reported right away to the USDA, so the township gets reimbursed for the funds, like, close, it's a little over four hundred thousand dollars, we get reimbursed almost immediately once it's reported. And she's on top of it already, and she's, I'm telling you, she is running this office, and we appreciate it. So thank you, Chris.
Um, I would do want to amend my motion to raise the pay of the administrative assistant to thirty dollars effective July one. Would you second that?
I absolutely will second that amendment.
Okay.
Who, for the pay, for the assessor, who seconded?
Jan.
Jan did, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you very much, let's move on. We're making pretty good time, I'm surprised. May not seem like it, but yes. Let me see here, that's police, 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 the next one is fire, self-explanatory. Any discussion before I call for a vote?
I, I'm still hoping that we can sit down and, and discuss how we're going to go from paying... Sorry, thank you. Button on this one's a little... If it works for you and not me, I'm going to be very upset.
I'll just leave this one.
I'm hoping that we can get together with the fire department and sort out the, some strategy to get the millage collections ahead of what the contract is so that we can get to a place where we're paying them in advance instead of in arrears. I don't like the fact that we're collecting in December of '24 for services during that calendar year.
The battery's horned correctly. We're good.
Well, thanks for fixing it.
Yeah.
But other than that, it's pretty simple. We have a fire millage line item. This is what we're going to collect, and this is what we're going to give to the fire department.
Why is there interest income? Should we put some of that money in the bank? That'd make sense.
We don't have it long enough to put it in the bank.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Okay. I move that we approve the fire budget. Is there a support?
I'll support that.
Jan supports. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Street lighting fund.
Street lighting. iPhone.
Okay. Just as a point of information, I use the, as we all know, electric gla... Electric rates are going sky high. But I use the same millage that we used last year to arrive at that figure.
So we're saying that the increase in property value is going to be sufficient to cover the increase in electricity?
Without, without an increase in millage.
Yep.
Which we have the authority to do on special assessments.
Would you like me to make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the street lighting fund.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Janet, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Boat launch funds. We have a healthy fund balance. To be honest with you, because of that balance, if there's a major event where they have to repair something that's not covered by insurance, the money would be there, so.
We could still do some CDs for that.
Yeah. Some, so on the expense size, expense side, it doesn't have to be super accurate because you have that additional cushion of $100,000.
Yep.
Any comments on the boat? Oh, how's the new system working?
New?
The increase?
So it's interesting. Lots of people paying for two days with the 20, not expecting change. Couple people threw $50 bills in cash in envelopes at the boat launch to pay for a annual pass. Some expecting change, others not. But, yeah.
Pretty heavy usage for Israeli for the year.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep. I have a bag of envelopes to process right now.
You only have two boat, two boat, two public boat launches. The State Park or us. Or you can go to Howa Marina and pay 25 bucks. Or Indian River Marina. Okay. Is there a motion to approve boat launch?
I'll make that motion.
Janet makes that motion. Is there support?
I'll support it.
I'm sorry?
I will support that.
Okay. That is, Kim? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sewer fund. This is going to take a while. Chris, could you just kind of go over the changes you made?
Jan and I looked at...
Give her a microphone.
This is Doc's phone. I think he left this.
Who?
Doc.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jan and I looked at the assessment sheets today, and we put in the principal and the interest amounts.
And how did you calculate that?
It's a spreadsheet that comes off the computer from the rule inside the special assessment module in BSNA. So the concern with those numbers for me is this. We have Steve Mann from the bond council working on the change that was made to the bond amortization last winter. And by last winter, I mean winter of 2022 that went on the December 2022 tax returns. That correction had been made in June of 2022. And it fundamentally changed the bond amort, the amortization charged to people in that district because the initial assessment was put in the system incorrectly. There was some discussion at the time about overcharging people in that district. Mr. Mann has done some calculations, as have I. My concern is that we want to get it fixed. But that remaining time on those loans for the sewer is likely to outlast me both as a treasurer and as a person on this planet. So I want to make sure it's something that stays in the system, that somebody doesn't have to manually go in and change these numbers every year to make it happen. Because if we do that, that is just not, it's not an acceptable solution. So I was able to talk to Mr. Mann this week. He's working on it. If we need to get BSNA's help, I'm confident that they would be able to step in and do that, but probably not for free. So these numbers, I'm not unhappy with them. I'm just saying that there may need to be an amendment to this budget for the phase, the initial Phase One sewer.
Oh, for sure.
Because that changing the numbers in the system will absolutely change these numbers.
Well, here's what people, some people don't want to hear, but the board's been talking about this for five years. At some point, there's going to have to be a DPW.
That's true.
There's going to have to be. Because our engineer is telling us that we need, what, four to five?
Three to four to start with, and maybe five.
After Phase Two.
For, for the new sewer coming, the new sewer districts coming in, it's going to take a lot more manpower to handle the extra load, whether it's repairing, whether it's just whatever needs.
Well, in the winter, it's going around checking the lights, checking the alarm systems, which, you know, if you don't, if you have a DPW, they can cut grass during the winter, or summer, rather, and shovel snow during the winter and check the lights and help out, help pull pumps.
They're talking about, like, just increasing our grounds maintenance people to be able to do dual duty when it's necessary.
Right.
And, and which makes sense. Because if you're going to do a whole DPW, you're going to have to have 15 to 20 people to make it work. We have people that don't have to sit around and just drive around all the time and check pumps. We have people that are around the community already, cutting grass and doing things like that. And while they're out there, they can check that, that area's, you know, pumps and stuff like that. So they'll be able to do double duty. We can pull them off of, let's just say a pump went down, and we have to have people in there to pull that pump, put a new one in. We can put them off of grass cutting and put them over there to help with that situation.
Yeah, because we don't want an environmental emergency either.
No. And, and, you know, you have to prioritize. But you don't have to have people just sitting around waiting for an emergency either. So that's what they're talking about, is just making them dual-purpose employees that they can help when necessary.
Some of them, not all of them.
Yeah, not all of them, no. Some of them, yeah. And, and so that's what they're talking about. It's for a future board's decision, but it's coming. It's going to...
And I will let you know that because our plant is more modern than anyone else's, we probably will be required to have a Class A operator instead of a Class B.
Yeah, because of the size of it, too.
Right. EGLE made that very clear. A Class A operator right now, that you can't find them, you can't get them. They're running around $120 grand a year, plus benefits. So this may have to be a contract hybrid.
Through meat and hunt, yeah.
But another thing I want to point out to the board, the State Park contract is up in 2025. So I talked to the per, one of the people that negotiated that contract with the State Park. And he, it's his opinion, and it's my opinion, that they need to go to full rate at the end of that contract, which is August 2025. Now, I know that's one more year away, but...
Contract negotiations have to start now for that.
Well, and they, and they have sort of started now. So they've, they've asked a number of questions. And the not-so-subtle hint was is that they, that they wanted, they were expecting us to bill them monthly with a, an actual meter read starting this, this year. Even though, and it was, you know, we had the conversation in April, and they were expecting that for, that when they got the first quarter bill, they thought that they were going to get a monthly bill with actual reads and...
That would be nice if they were completely on the system. But, but they're not completely metered. They're not completely metered.
Well, and I can do a lot of things, but I can't go back in time, so.
Right.
If we had the conversation in April, I can't raise a meter in January or February.
Well, my, my concern is, they paid a whole bunch of money upfront, a lot. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. But on the back end, they're paying less. But when you add it all up, they're paying about the same rate as if they were paying full price. It was just structured in a different way, where they gave us a bunch of upfront money and less on the downside. So I would say that if you did the math, the present billing is going to be very similar to what the past billing was in total. And with this system becoming old, we all know about the major capital improvements that we had to make because, you know, the life cycle is what, 10, 10 years?
10 years.
Right? And we're hitting it, and we spent a lot of money. And that, and that's why the sewer system is underwater. And hopefully, when we get, if we get more hookups, that, that should help us quite a bit.
And the upgrades that we're going to be doing with the, the new districts coming in is going to help a lot, too. Because we're going to have to upgrade some of that equipment because it's going to be obsolete for the size. So that will help a little. But, yeah, we have, we have to get the State Park fixed up and get a new contract with them. And I think they're willing, there's, there, there is a caveat to this, though, that I have recently learned about, that they can negotiate the contract. But if Lansing doesn't give them the money, they can't pay it. Just keep that in mind when we go to negotiate the contract.
Very one-sided contract.
Yes, it is a one-sided contract.
Yeah, I hope we just say, what contract? You're a regular customer now. It's X amount of REUs per quarter.
75.
You know, and...
But they do not belong to the SAD. They cannot belong to the SAD. That's the law.
So if, you know, if you want it metered, that's fine, too. But instead of going to less than a half of a cent per gallon, it's going to 2.1 cents per gallon.
Like everybody else.
Like everybody else. Pat and Gary's on a meter now. We've got to switch that over. I forgot. You know how to do that. I don't.
Yep.
Good for you. So I do want to point out, if you'll look at the bottom of page two on this, calculations, were $69,000 in the red. And every year, we're in the red because we're using the money from the State Park. So...
But that's why we increase?
That's why we increase at a minimum 6%. Sue Fisher did that thing, that calculation, what, three years ago?
Yeah, and Bobby went to the classes to get that all taken care of.
Right.
And so far, it's working to bring that down. But we've got some more to go.
And I think I might have told the board, maybe I didn't, that our screen is broken. We need a $200,000 screen out there. They're doing it two or three times a day by...
And it's going to get more often with...
And it's going to get worse, so. That's, so I just wanted to point that out. Did you want to add anything else? Anybody else? Chris?
At what, my question is, at what point do you become neutral on that, that loss?
I think it was over 10 years, wasn't it?
Yeah, so, yeah. It's a while, but a minimum of six, oh, six.
Six years. Yeah, it was, you're right. It was six years.
Yeah. But, but the thing of it is, it's like, when you're, when you're having the $200,000 replacement for equipment, you're never, you know, it's always going to be in the red.
Now, now, one thing I do want to point out that is not in here, because I don't have firm applications yet. But if the in-between applies for their nine additional REUs, you multiply that times eight, that's $72,000. That takes care of this deficit. Because it has to be paid upfront, and it's not an REU fee, it's a hookup fee.
Right.
Right? And then you've got the old M&amp;M building right over here. That's an additional REU. And we're going to get REUs from Commerce Park. So I think...
So who, so who should put together this analysis? Is that the sewer folks? Or is that Jan or the clerk? Pretty simple projection right now because it's... I just think you got to put it to paper so that we have a record of it. And we keep using that as an means to... It's an additional seven from Jakeway if that comes to pass.
If, if and when he builds. If and when he builds. And that will also take care, you know, that'll also increase O&amp;M. We'll get more O&amp;M money. Any more discussion on this one?
The condos.
Nine REUs?
Nine.
Or eight or whatever. He hadn't, he hadn't built them yet. He hadn't applied. So...
So one of the advantages of development is to have these...
A more efficient sewer system, yeah.
More efficient. But we got to put it on paper, is all I'm suggesting.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of approving Sewer Fund 590?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Janet made the motion, and Jan supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next one. Motion passes.
Swap it out.
Battery. Okay, so we're on special assessments. This is challenging. You're going to have to help me with this, Jan. And Chris. Did we find the magic number we needed?
Yes.
What is it?
I don't know what it is. So projected income for Chippewa Beach, this is the last year, I believe.
Yeah.
That, for collections, that's $71,665. Wabi special assessment, that projected collection is $17,592.
Okay.
And with some minor interest collected on those, 250 for... We just looked at this, Chris.
250 for...
Yeah, the 250 is for...
Saying some, how about that investment?
Yep, yep. And then, that's why I like very descriptive GL lines. Chippewa Beach interest is about $6,000, and Wabi interest is going to be about $3,000. So total coming in is $98,668.94.
Well, why, why are the bond payments increasing instead of decreasing? 226, 226, then it goes to 234, and then 242. And the other thing that concerns me is we have a negative $147,000, and we're not allowed to have a negative budget because we have no backup.
I don't have the page that you're looking at, sir.
Page two?
Yep. I don't have it. I have.
Here. Sorry. Sir, do I have page two?
No.
Okay, let me go make copies.
One page, one page. Sewer fund, though, we need a special assessment.
So the, the the answer to your question is that the, it's not a simple, a dollar comes in in special assessment collections and a dollar goes out in the bond payment. So the, the, ideally, when we do a special assessment, I would love to have a work paper that says, here are the sources of rev, of cash and here are the uses of cash. And this is how we're going to collect the money back and make the payments and sort of do a cash flow over the life of the loan and the special assessment. Unfortunately, we don't have that to fall back on, but, but we do have, I've got to true this, this up and make sure that, Chris and I started looking at this in December. And it's one of the things that we have that consultant helping us with, figure out how we got here. I think that my cash over in short problem may be tied to this issue.
Okay. So if I read this, help me with this, Jan, at the very bottom of the page.
Yep.
It says we have a fund balance. So we use that to offset the loss. But we still have a loss of $28,000.
Right, and what I'm saying is, when I look at the trial balance that includes special assessments, there is a cash over in short account that had $100,000 in it, right?
Right.
And I got to figure out which spec, it's clear that special assessments were incorrectly booked there. What's not clear is how much from which ones.
But in order to publish this budget
Yeah.
today, we've got to come up with $28,650. Do we make an inter-fund transfer from the general fund temporarily? Or what do we do to balance this?
I would, I would say that your best option today is to transfer from the general fund.
So would that be an expense closing offset or an inter? Well, there's an inter-fund transfer out, but we need an inter-fund transfer in.
And, and I'm sure there is an inter-fund transfer in account. It's just not in, in this report.
Okay.
Can you look, Chris? In 860?
We'd have to go back to the general ledger to see if it had been closed at some point in time.
Oh, gotcha.
So what can we do today to fix this issue?
Well, I think temporarily, we could borrow $28,650.60 from the general fund in FY '25, next budget year, until such time as this can be corrected.
And then we would
Because
Then we would make it a budget amendment to reverse.
Right, because if we were short, we would still have to make that up out of the general fund anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
So how would we do this, Jan? Would we make a motion separately that we add $29,000 transfer from the general fund on July 1st?
Yes.
Ah, okay. I mean, there's no way we're going to get this done by July, by June 27th, right? I, I can't see that happening. It, it might happen. So this is a solution to give us more time, right?
Well, and, and it's a solution that can easily be reversed when we get that other problem analyzed and fixed.
Okay.
Which we're working on now.
Yes, yes.
So could you use your financial wizardry and make that?
Make a motion?
Yes.
I move that we, it would be very, I would feel much more comfortable if I actually had general ledger numbers.
Use the words then.
Yep, okay. I make a motion that we transfer $28,650.60 from the general fund to this 860 special assessment fund balance.
Revenue. Oh, balance. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Is there a second?
To cover the projected shortfall.
I'll second it.
Jay seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, do we need a motion to, I mean, where do I show this on the paperwork I'm going to publish? How do I do that?
We'll, we'll make a journal entry.
Okay, where in the general fund are we pulling that from?
Just the general fund?
From
General fund balance.
Yeah.
Okay.
For balance sheet account.
Right, effective July 1.
From the 101 general.
Yeah, effective July 1. All right, you can do it now. It doesn't matter.
Make it effective July 1.
Yep.
That's what the motion was, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then now you need to approve the budget.
We have
Well, hang on a second.
We have to approve the budget adjustment first. We got to jam and jay.
No, we jam, yeah. So is there any more discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. So we're going to make that transfer. Now, would that, that would just go down here to the fund balance, correct?
Yeah, so you're going to see
So that's going to, this, this line's going to end up at zero.
Correct.
Okay, then we'll be good. Okay. So with that said, is there a motion to, to approve Fund 860 special assessment as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Janet makes that motion. Support?
I'll support that.
Jan supports. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Wow, two and a half hours. That's pretty good.
I'm glad we're going through this because it explains a lot of issues that's kind of been just on the fringe and stuff and we can get right down and pick this, explain to everybody so we all know what's going on, so.
Okay, I'd like to go through, next item is the proposed six-year capital improvement plan. Township parking lot Martha Street. There is funding available. USDA now has funding available. It's just a question of, do you want to pursue it now? Or do you want to wait till next year?
Now. We'd have to write the grant, the grant request.
Well, it's grant plus loan.
Right. It's over a 10-year period? How much would the grant be?
It could go 20.
Yeah, 20, yeah, yeah.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yep.
Now, I, I want to make some clarifications. The parking lot cost was 43, you saw the drawings. 43 parking spaces behind Craig's Place and over there off of Martha, plus a sidewalk running down from Martha with the same streetlights. It would not be the path from the parking lot to behind the 310. And that could be a phase two, I would think. But if we're going to apply for this, you would just authorize someone to apply and then present it to the board for approval or disapproval. I'm sure we'd want, want to also get input from the DDA. I mean, they've seen the drawings and what have you.
Why wouldn't the DDA perform this analysis?
I'm sorry?
I said, why wouldn't the DDA perform this analysis? Why wouldn't they go after the grant?
Well, they're volunteers and I don't think they have the time or the staff to do it. And they don't have the experience factor with USDA like we do. Janet and I.
This is the last piece of property in the downtown area that is viable for a parking lot. It was promised as a parking lot back when we did the commercial sewer district. Because they were, and the streetscape, because they were losing some parking. And they kind of said, well, we got this property over here that we could make it someday into a parking lot. It was just not really a big kind promise, but it was kind of throw it about there just to make sure that the business people knew that there was an alternative. But there's never been funding available for that, and now there is. If we do a 20-year, it'd be $10,000 a year payback there about.
Plus interest.
Plus interest, and the interest is very low with the USDA, two something, isn't it?
I mean, that could, that could come out of road and bridges easily.
Yeah, so, you know, it, it is setting the township up for potential growth. It would give off-street parking to employees as well. It's right going to be in the center of town, right down in your downtown district. It's a, it's a, it's a good alternative, and now there's funding available. Like I said, it's setting the township up for future growth and future business. It includes streetlights and paving and 43 parking spots. It's a pretty, pretty good-sized parking lot.
And people are parking down there anyway.
Yeah, they're parking there anyway.
I mean, every time you go by there, you see that right round?
Yep.
It's not going to get any cheaper.
No.
And, and I can also tell you that when we sold some properties, not the, not, not, one of the commerce properties way back, we said that that funding was going to be used for this
Yeah, we kind of
for parking. We, we, we said that. It's in the minutes somewhere.
Yeah.
It's about a year and a half ago, right?
And the thing of it is, the money's available to get that loan now. And we looked into it six months ago. There was no money for parking lots. They laughed at us when we asked. Now all of a sudden there is. It's like
I, I talked to USDA two or three times a week, so you know, I can ping them again, but my recommendation would be, you're not approving the parking lot. You're approving an application for funding.
And let's see if we get it, and then, and then
And then we move from there.
Yeah.
So the only thing I would say is we would need a motion for that and a motion to change the project to start date of 2024 with an end date of 2025, because you're not going to get it built this year.
Well, I would like to make the motion that the township applies for that grant slash loan and
And maybe only be loan-only. We'll see what we can get.
Maybe, and, and just see what happens and then we can, at least we have some options to go forward and, and talk about it then if we want to commit the township to that. But like I said, it's the last piece of property the township board owns that could be viable for a parking lot in the downtown area.
We, and as we discussed before, we can't do it behind the old, which is now gone, the old lumberyard, because of all the electric port poles and all the, and the slope. The slope is so bad, it, it, it just isn't viable. Because you don't want to build a retaining wall near a snowmobile trail that somebody can wreck into. So when, when OHM or OMH, whoever it was, came out here and they pointed all that out and took some surveyor readings when they, when they did the estimate. So is there a second to Jan's motion? Janet's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kim seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get that started. I also move that we change the start date to 2024. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Janet seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Basketball court. Forget about the word 27,000, not even close. The 27,000, Doug and I worked on this for two days. In fact, today, even. The 27,000, the problem with the basketball courts is they build it initially with concrete. Then they put it over, over the top of that, they put asphalt. It, it's in really, really bad shape. And the $27,000 is just to go in there and crack seal and recote.
Are you kidding? Just crack seal? It's going to cost them $30,000 to crack seal?
Crack seal and, and recote. And ain't cheap, is it?
No.
Ask Mark. He knows. He was out there. And in Doug's opinion, we might get two or three years out of it. So it's almost like you're throwing $27,000. What, 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 what needs to happen is all that has to come out of there, including the concrete. Right? You're looking at $20,000 to get rid of the concrete. The court is 9,600 square, 9,700 square feet at $9 a square foot. Then you got to add your design, your permits, and your contingency. So now you're looking at 120.
You might want to call MDC about getting rid of the concrete. They generally take concrete debris back for no charge.
Yeah, once you dig it up. Yeah. So I'm just suggesting that we not do anything, leave it 2025, but change that cost to 120,000. I don't want to end up like we did with the steps where we thought it was going to cost 24 and it ended up being, what, 80?
Eight.
So I move that we change that cost to 120,000. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, West Oak Lodge, fine. Bathroom replacement, we all hear from, in December on the DNR ward. Bathrooms are in progress.
How are those coming, by the way?
I, I couldn't tell you. That's parked.
I haven't been down there.
I know they've been working on it. Got a lot done.
They have.
There's a lot of bills in the box. Which is good. IT security upgrades may or may not be covered with this $200,000 grant for the building, but I think we ought to just leave it in there. Okay?
Some of it's going to likely be covered by the merit upgrade.
And, and this is different than the expenses that are in the operating budget of $12,000.
It is. It's over above.
Yeah.
But remember, when we did that, we weren't aware of merit offering to do $25,000 worth of work for $6,000.
The Green Dock bathroom replacement, to be honest with you, yeah, I think we can just leave it there, but it's going to be challenging because of the environment.
Yeah, I don't really see that happening.
I know. I, I think it's possible. But I think we just need to leave that for this, when the final sewers get in. They've got to run a line right by there anyway.
Yep.
And we have a drop planned for there. But I just think that's something that would have to be done with a passport grant. The cemeteries, we don't have anything in there for 2024 because we did so much work. But Ohioville definitely needs attention.
Yeah, they didn't get much from the last
They didn't get anything.
Yeah. They got
Well, they got a couple of stumps ground.
Yeah, but
And Doug does pretty well out there, but I, I would like to leave that there so some future board can try and get that taken care of. On the faceery sewer expansion, we got 1 million of the 6,500 that we're working to move to phase two.
6.5 million.
Million, 100.
Right, right. But I will tell you, I'm not going to be around where it says grant. That's congressional. You know, there, there's two sources. There's USDA and there's EPA
Through Washington.
Via, via a congressional earmark.
Yeah.
And that takes somebody literally traveling to Washington like I did and like Anna did and her husband did.
Oliver, yeah.
And it's very special. In fact, I think it's going to be due this year, this next year in March. And, you know, our, our key to success in the past has been going to both senators and, and Jack Bergman, uh, to be completely covered, that's how we got the 1 million. Because if it passes one, it's probably going to pass all.
So we can leave it in, or that?
Well, I, I, I think we can either reduce it to 5.5 or leave it as it is.
I say leave it as it is, because of.
Because of inflation?
Yeah.
Okay. Then in 2026, we have the cemeteries again.
You have to, you have to keep, um, fixing the cemeteries, because you have to invest, but we do get money from the cemeteries too, by selling lots and things like that. But it is an investment, it's township-owned property, we have to maintain it, um, and it's looking so much better, and, and we've put so much money into it, if we don't keep putting a little bit towards it every year, it's going to go back really quick, and, and we just need to keep it up now that it's starting to look nice. We'll sell more properties in there too, the better it looks, so.
I can also tell you, when you go to Marina Park Boat Launch, bathroom replacement of Phase 3 occurs, 50 grand is not, not, not even close.
No.
I, I would suggest 80. If we only get a one-stall bathroom prefab, you're looking at 65,000-plus setup. So my recommendation is that we jack that up to 80.
Yeah.
Any objections?
Nope.
I'll make that motion in a second.
I'll support that.
She'll support, all in favor?
Aye.
Ah, good. Okay, then, uh, priority, uh, I don't see any reason to change the airport. There's always funds coming up. I would just leave that, and at the first opportunity, when it, when it presents itself, we'll go for it. Gordon also told me we do not need a 2025 vehicle replacement. But there's, but there's no reason to take it out of there, it's strictly up to the board.
He'll have the funds to do that anyway in his budget, he always, he always puts budget, um, money aside every year towards the new vehicle.
Yeah, but because it's a capital expenditure, you've still got to get permission from us.
Right, but it comes out of his budget, so just letting everybody know.
So, maybe we just leave it.
Yeah, just leave it.
I don't quite understand DDA sidewalks' cost per block, but that's what they submitted, so I don't want to leave it.
Do you understand what that is about?
I believe that the, the sidewalk cost was possibly adding additional sidewalks.
Okay.
A few other blocks, but it was not very high priority.
It, it says, it says side street sidewalk, so I'm thinking it's bad.
Some of the side streets.
Perpendicular to the.
Yeah.
Main.
Okay. Uh, pathway from Vivio's to Cooperation Park, 500,000's a pipe dream.
Okay, there's an issue that a lot of people don't realize about that, that, and I, I think we need to make it very clear. I've gone to the county about that a couple of times, and this is what I found out from the road commission. There's easement, and then there's not easement. It depends on the property, um, and, like Vivio's, there's no easement there. That's their property right to the edge of the road. Other properties, not an easement.
Save across the street.
Yeah, it's some of it across the street, some of it, but you'll go down so far, and then there's no easement, and then it's like, okay, what do you do now? And if they don't want to sell you the easement, they don't have to. And so for this right now, um, because of the way the structure is with the easements going down to Cooperation Park, it's very unlikely this will ever happen, as it stands today, things can change. But this is what I've been told through the road commission, through the county, um, that this is going to be very, very difficult to come off. You can have all the money in the world, but if they won't give you the easement as you're going down, it's not going to, it's not going to come off. I mean, I want this, I think it's imperative that we have it, because of the neighborhoods along that way, kids, you know, baby strollers, all this kind of stuff, they're all, all the time on the side of those roads, and, but, in actuality, to actually make it work at this point, unless things change, I, and you're nodding your head, you, you, you understand the situation too, it's, it's, it's probably.
I mean, what are we going to do, take their parking away?
Well, that's what people are saying, but I can't.
On the Vivio side, you're going to take their parking away?
That, that's it.
On the BP side, you're going to take one of their pumps away?
That, that's where we're at, you know, there's, there's very little wiggle room, I'm saying, to put a pathway down there.
I mean, maybe you go behind Vivio, maybe you go behind Michael's, I don't know.
Then you're still dealing with private property easements and stuff. So that's what I'm saying. I just want the community to think, it's just not like putting in a sidewalk and there you go, it's not, it's not as simple as that, because there's private property rights that involve that. You can't eminent domain it necessarily to put a bike path there, it doesn't really qualify, and, and you don't want to make the business owners or the property owners mad. I mean, there's apartments that's just past where the fire department and all that is, their parking is right there, there's no other east, that's it, they're like, you know, so for them to give up the parking.
Is there a motion, is there a motion?
Yes, please.
Well, I'll just explain to the situation so it's public, why this is going to be a very difficult project if it ever comes off.
All right, so let's just leave that the way it is for now?
It's a DDA thing, so.
Right, and, uh, I think we should leave, uh, I think we should leave Cressy, uh, the same, and then, uh, we've already had a hearing on this, we heard people, we've made changes, but we'll approve this when we approve the budget on June 27.
But we're not funding these, we're approving this as a project list.
Right, as a priority desired list.
Right.
Is that for funding, just?
Right, there's.
Right, right.
We'd have to pull $300,000 from the general fund in order to make the 2025 projects happen.
Yeah, and, uh.
And that's.
I would, I mean, if I had to do this today, I would be saying, um, I approve the plan, but, but it's all unfunded.
Correct.
Correct.
So, okay, we're done with that one, budget adjustments. We went over this quite a bit today, didn't we, Chris?
Yeah.
You mean amendments.
Yes. I did make a, a higher change, because it worked out better.
Okay.
So, especially with, I can't remember the number right now, but, uh, on, oh, contracted services down there, 801, 567-801 is the cemetery, as Jay told me, we've got three burials coming up, uh, and they're going to need the additional funding for that. But this is, all these budget amendments are neutral, there's no increase in spending. So I move that we approve the amendments as presented.
I'll second.
Janet seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ta-da, public comments, three minutes.
You're going to do bills?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah? Not a lot of bills, but they're there.
I'll make a motion, repay bills.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Yes, sir?
Tyler Gordon, um, just wanted to mention real quick, I did call Bridgewater Escavating, because it's my aunt. Um, they did finish up at the Marina Park at the end of the day today, uh, with the gravel they were bringing in.
Wonderful.
So that's good. Um, second of all, I just want to mention that I appreciated, uh, the work the board put into getting all this balanced. You think as someone coming into politics or government, that balancing a budget would be simple, uh, coming from owning a business, if you don't have a balanced budget, you're in trouble, but it's not that common in government to see a balanced budget, so I do appreciate that. Uh, I hope that whoever is on the next board, uh, people are able to work together, even with varying backgrounds, opinions, and have something happen like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
I just want to say too, the fountain looks very nice, the power washing of the fountain.
Wait, we have a board comment. Uh, any public comments, any more public comments? Public comments are closed, board comments? No board comments? You got a comment? Who has a comment?
Make your comment.
I already did.
What did you make?
The fountain was nice.
Yeah, which fountain?
The fountain down by Kent Harris.
Oh, oh, it's working. Wonderful. Wonderful. Any other?
I sat in it.
I used to get in trouble when I was a kid for swimming in it. And the old Kwanath one by the rail yard, I used to get in trouble. Any other comments?
Nope.
I just want to thank you all for your patience, and thanks to the people, uh, that came. Motion adjourned.
Make a motion. Everybody.
Everybody adjourned, thank you very much. Adjourn.